Just wanted to call me, George, and welcome all of our guests tonight. We certainly appreciate you being here. And we're going to stand and have our play at the latest center in the occasion. I'll give an invitation to Francis. Would you ladies enjoy playing that? Can you go to the place for me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First prayer. Lord, I do thank you for this time together. And, Lord, thank you for each one that's come here tonight. And, Lord, just pray your blessings upon them each and each decision that is made. And, Lord, pray that it's according to your will. And, Lord, thank you for our city. Thank you for each citizen which we represent. And we pray that we make decisions that's best for your... Ask for your forgiveness. Lord, thank you for all you do for us in Carson, Georgia. First thing on agenda tonight is, uh... Have Erica Adams from the Country Place Senior Living. Erica didn't want to come up here, so I'm going to speak for her. But, uh... Their number is nine two one zero zero eight three. And Erica says that the Country Place Living should be open about the second week of May. Is that correct, Erica? And starting each Wednesday, they have what they call Sneak Peak Wednesday. So you can take a tour of the building each Wednesday, around ten to twelve, or something like that.
I'm from like nine to eleven.
Nine to eleven, starting each Wednesday. So that's just a few more weeks. So she's here today, but she was too shy to come up here in front of everybody. We thank her for being here, and they did a great job. The building looks beautiful. And we're looking forward to having Sister Living here now. There's several residents already going to be moving in there. And we saw plans, uh... That's right. Right where you want it. So the building is great. Just a few more weeks, it'll be open. So Erica, thank you. And once again, I'll give that number up if you're watching on TV. It's nine two one zero zero eight three. And call Erica, and she can tell you anything you need to know about that building.
Did you say the Sneak Peak starts when?
Starts on Wednesday. Starting this Wednesday.
This Wednesday. Wrong. You say... Did you say nine to eleven?
Nine to eleven.
Sorry.
So thank you, Erica, for being here tonight. Appreciate you being here. Okay, first thing we have... Our second thing is a recommendation to approve the minutes from last meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make one.
Okay, Graham, is there a second?
Second.
On the favor, say aye. Next on the agenda is the recommendation to approve the county's payable bills. Is there a motion to approve paying those bills?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll say aye.
On the favor, say aye. Number four is a recommendation to purchase two thousand twelve Ford pickup for the water department. This is from the State of Alabama Transportation Equipment Bureau for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to purchase this truck?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
This is truck we use in the water department for replacing one sewer plants. That's what we do with this truck. On the favor, say aye. Number five, uh... Maybe do some discussion on this. Is a recommendation to accept a proposal from GSC Supply Company on quote of four hundred and fifteen dollars for speed bumps and signs on a portion of Academy Drive. Uh... This particular street has had several complaints about speeding up down this road. And the quote, it covers speed bumps and signs. That's why I put them on there, uh... For us to purchase. If there's any discussion on that, we can do that now before we vote on it. Tim, you're asking his question about it. Well, go.
How many... How many calls for that?
I think it's two. It's two, uh... You've got a copy there. Save it to me and slide it in, so they just drive speed bumps.
Are we also going to, um... Lower the speed limit on that road?
Yes. It's also post two signs, um... To put on that street. Probably we've had trouble with some complaints in that particular area. So that would be our recommendation.
Well, I don't have... I don't have anything against the speed bumps and especially in areas where there's small children and the houses are close together. And it definitely is not a place to speed. I live on Still Street, and it's like two seventy-eight. I'm just wondering, uh... Will this open up more requests for... More?
Probably not. Very possible, you know? But...
I'd always say chief out there do a little monitoring that road before we try to do it.
We've done some ticket writing and stuff up there. We've set in some complaint at yours. We've done some ticket writing by nature.
What's the speed limit?
I think it's twenty-five.
It's twenty-five.
Probably should be about fifteen.
What is it? Does it still continue? Since you've been doing it?
Don't know that it...
So we're all...
I could tell you if it is still continuing or if it's still ceased. What's that speed bump we're talking about?
Uh... They say it's two inch. I don't know the height of it.
It's number four.
Remember, one time later, we were saying we looked into that. We kind of backed out of that. Uh... They have some problem, liability problems on that. They never did put those speed bumps on them.
Scott wants to know how good it is. I mean, if somebody's speeding, certainly obviously I wouldn't be liable for that.
As long as we had the reduced speed limit and we had the signs up there or giving proper notice for it, I think the city would be fine. And obviously, assuming that the speed bumps are installed properly, but we would be okay from legal standpoint, as long as we get notice. And it is a street that it's reduced speed limit even at twenty-five. Some cars should be traveling at a safe enough speed to go up and...
So we're going to lower it from twenty-five to somewhere?
Scott says we need to vote on that. So if we purchase this, we still need to make another motion separate to lower the speed limit from twenty-five to fifteen with proper signs.
Argument if we don't purchase it, we can lower the speed.
Exactly. Correct. So what's your other recommendation?
Is the problem from up there at the top of the hill where you try to bump into that Academy Drive is that it is such a straight shot goes across that little creek?
We use it as a car...
Cut off.
They're turning off military coming across there. Maybe they're trying to avoid, you know, going to the red lights or whatever. There's a lot of traffic on the road. It's not focused up there. I think it's a problem. Yeah, a lot of through traffic.
Cut from forty-three over the back, sir.
Cut from three over the back, correct. So, I mean... I'm hoping to do whatever council suggests. And I've got them here to make the recommendation. But I'm also hoping to... If you want to try and lower it first, the speed limit, we can do that.
I would not lower the speed limit. I just... I'm kind of like PM, I would lower.
You want to try a little bit, see them first? You know how that works?
It has to be the whole street.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chief, Nims, still monitor that street up there for a while.
But what you say is true. It's a bypass that goes around, goes in by the Omaha Place and comes out above the Amica. It's quicker to get around the lights, especially in the afternoon. School traffic, work traffic.
Okay.
Well, that's when somebody needs to be sitting next to them.
Well, if you're not sure about the sign, the speed bumps, why don't we... Someone make a motion to lower that from twenty-five to fifteen?
I'll make a motion, Lord. From twenty-five to fifteen.
On this street, on Academy?
On Academy.
Then we'll monitor that. And if that doesn't work, then we'll come back to this on this.
It's just going to be all the way from the Omaha Place, all the way around up there.
Wherever Academy is.
Entire street.
I mean, we can do... We can do section, or the entire.
What's the rest of the range?
Rest of it, I think it's all twenty-five, all the way around there.
But it's all residential, correct?
Yes, pretty much.
Gus's...
But it runs... Does it not? It runs up in front of Miss Cobb's house, so that...
Just leave it at fifteen mill street? Let me down.
It's the easiest way.
It's the easiest way.
Not hard.
According to me...
It does. It runs all the way around.
He goes up to Eagle.
That'd be...
Whereas the entire here is not Academy.
That'd be...
Going by the Omaha Place.
That's what you...
Second street. Go all the way from Austin to part of that.
And you've got that garage. It's like an Academy turn right. The complaints are coming in where Academy turn right right there.
It's across the...
Myson's Place, I'm up to the...
Yes, sir.
Military.
So Jim, what was that, the last question, number two fourteen?
I think that's four dash seven.
Four dash seven. And that's too low. Lower the speed limit from twenty-five to fifteen. Ten minute motion, two seconds. Pais, any other discussion on that? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next. Next recommendation to approve Goodwin Mills and Kaywood proposal for professional services for phase one fee of four thousand five hundred dollars for structural assessment and report on existing condition of a must wear building. Before we do that, Kurt, I'd like you to address the council on this proposal and what this covers and the reason for it. All right, Mike?
I'm good. All right, see, uh... Proposal we have, we've broken it into two parts on the building. Uh... Phase one is structural assessment. We'll have a structural engineer come down and do a... Do it once over on the building and give us a written report of what he... What his assessment of the structure of the building is, what it's in, what kind of shape it's in. Uh... And assuming that goes well, then we can move on to phase two, which would be bringing in architects and structural mechanical, electrical guys, and going from there. If the report doesn't come back good, we'll just stop there. We'll just stop at the phase one. And there's no reason to move forward if the structure is not as good.
I'm just a little curious. How were you able to give us the estimates on repairing the roof and all these other estimates without knowing that, uh... That the structure was sound?
Those are conceptual budgets. Well, the roof... The roof... Roof's pretty simple. We know we just, you know, we have a pretty good idea of what it costs per square foot to re-roof a structure of that size. Uh... The other ones were, you know, rough conceptual numbers.
So it was just going on the assumption that it was...
Yes.
And I think in this article somewhere... Did someone not already say that it was structurally sound? Was that just an assumption also?
It seems to be structurally sound, but we haven't had a structural engineer to actually come and do any full blown assessment.
I was thinking we'd already paid for it. Somebody had last counsel or something. Is that the environment?
Yeah, there was some... There was some...
I think it started.
There was some preliminary environmental work done, um... Right after the building was given to the city. I think there was a prospect that was looking at it. They started the other part of the proposal that you have on the environmental. Uh... They started that, but it hit very far into it before they shut that down.
Have they studied how long they're good for? Did we say five years at one time?
Oh, the... You know, the... I don't know how the structural is good for as long as the... You... Whatever parts of structure looks at our end. You know, structural's not going to change unless the issue building changes.
And they did some environmental?
They did some preliminary. Yes, they did some preliminary work on environmental.
And so that's good?
If we do... The environmental they did or the environmental they're proposing they did?
That they did.
The environmental they did, they didn't get very far.
So they didn't get far enough long?
They didn't get far enough long to actually do any kind of report or any kind of paperwork on the... The environmental, first time around.
So after phase one of the structural inspection or assessment is done, you'll come back and give us a report? And that's going to take...
Uh... The structural...
Less than thirty days.
Uh... And it'll be a written report from a structural engineer that we can give a copy of.
Based on that, determine whether we pursue the next phase, which will be architectural.
Architectural, mechanical, electric.
Mechanical, electric.
There's no reason to pursue that.
Right.
You know, initially, we talked about bringing everybody down at once. And then we decided it would be...
Correct.
Better idea to do structural. So if it comes back not good, then there's a reason to go.
Then I'll make a motion, we do it.
Make a motion that we pursue structural assessment first?
One second.
Tim, thank you. Any discussion on this? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, Kurt, just keep the seat right there.
Yeah.
Is a recommendation to approve the proposal for cost assessment for ADM voluntary cleanup program phase one for the must wear facility. And phase one is for fifty-two hundred and forty dollars. Tell us why all that includes... And like you said, they did start this a couple administrations ago. They had a possible, uh... Tenant, maybe at that time, prospect for that building.
Right.
But it wasn't enough done to even finish the report. Is that correct?
That's correct. What they did... What they did then was, uh... The beginning work, uh... Phase one. Uh... What the phase one part is there is to develop an initial assessment plan. Uh... It's basically to decide what parts that you're going to... Where are you going to take samples? Uh... Where are you going to take water samples? Where are you going to take soil samples? Looking inside, determining, you know, what the best places to go for runoff and those type of things are. Uh... And that work was started and then stopped before the fully the plan was developed. Uh... And so that's what this phase one is, is to develop the plan. And then phase two goes along with that to follow through the plan and take the soil samples, to have them analyzed, to take the water samples, to go through all the process of determining whether or not there is any contamination on the site. And at that point, that's phase one and phase two. Uh... At that point, again, it's time to stop and look. If the site is clean, if it meets current regulations, then we're good. And we're done. We're ready to move forward with whatever we want to do out there. Uh... If it is contaminated, then that's when phase three comes into effect. Uh... You have to develop a cleanup plan and have ADM approve it. And then follow through with the cleanup plan and have ADM come and look at it and make sure you did what you said you were going to do or give their current on.
But what you're saying is phase one, it need to be good without phase two. You've got to have one and two together.
One and two are together.
So why are we just voting on one?
Well, it's just what we had on the agenda. So it would really need to be phase one.
It would need to be phase one and phase two.
That's... It's not done first. It's not just scheduled. I didn't know we needed to do it both at one time.
Yeah. One is just getting ready.
Okay.
It's making the plan of where you're going to take the samples from and those sort of things. Uh... Also, on page three of the proposal, there's some ADM V's. Uh... The first two, the application review and the assessment review. Those would be involved in phase one and phase two. Those... That's not our V. That's very look to ADM for their involvement.
No way about that loss on that... On this page?
There's a... The third page, uh... Right where's the potential ADM V's. Or space one, two, application review and assessment review. Those are fees that ADM charges to be involved in the process.
Okay, so what's the total for tonight? The estimated cost of phase one, phase two, and these fees?
Uh... It would be thirty... Thirty-nine, nine forty for phase one and phase two on our end. And then ninety-eight, thirty to eighty, roughly, what did you say? Forty, fifty thousand.
How much, ADM, did you say?
A little less than ten thousand, right around ten thousand.
Oh, it's the application view and assessment. Okay, I get you.
And this has to be done before anything can be done with the land?
This is your... This will determine whether or not there's contamination that needs to be cleaned up or if you're in good shape that there doesn't need to be that.
So basically, this to be done?
Basically.
It's like you're told this all... I mean, I knew this, but we ain't had a little bit up and down before we both spent twenty-seven thousand dollars.
That's what I say.
This is all...
Big bird.
It's kind of getting carted for the horse, look at me now.
By the water, the...
It's separate.
It was separate. I mean, it wouldn't have to be at the must wear property. You know, the assessment for the water, uh... Feasibility study, uh... If we pursue this study, we'd still be, you know, set... Of course, separate from this. I know what you're saying, Tim, because that's, you know, property. Talk about...
I'm a putter. Everybody can. Look at that.
Yeah, the... It is expensive.
It is, yes. It... We do have... I was telling the mayor, I was better aware of this. On the way over here, I was talking to our environmental guy. Make sure I do all the timelines for everything. Um... In the last six months, I guess, we've hired a lady who spent the last fifteen to twenty years at ADM in this department. Uh... The voluntary cleanup remediation department of ADM. She works for us now with the environmental guys. So, uh... It would make things go fairly smooth through this process. She knows the ins and outs and everything that we would need to do, who we need to talk to, who we need to go for, those sort of things.
So how long are we looking at on this?
Thirty to forty-five days.
And that's phase one until?
Yes, ma'am. Probably take a couple of weeks for the phase one and then we drive them into it, taking the samples and getting them analyzed and report ready.
Well, this feasibility study, uh... Am I wrong? I mean, this was for the aquatic facility. This was... Didn't have anything to do with building itself.
The aquatic feasibility?
Yeah.
It doesn't have anything to do with building.
That's right. That's what I bought, for twenty-seven, five. So this is entirely different.
You got the ground. Put it up there for us. We're talking about the ground, not the building.
Yeah, we're talking about the property, the steel. They did the whole four acres?
Yes, this is the whole property. This is an assessment of the entire piece of property.
And if we, uh... Were trying to get that building built for an industry or business or anything, this would... This study needs to be done by...
Yes, that... Yes, ma'am. If you're going to bring in... If you're going to bring in an industry or something there, nobody's going to loan you money until you have this.
This study is going to be necessary to make any improvements then.
That's correct.
Remodel it or water it.
I'll make a motion that we accept it. Phase one, phase two, do the voluntary pay down.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll say a second.
Any other discussion? On the favor, say aye. Thank you. Kurt, also next Monday night.
Yeah.
Uh... Tell us what this proposal's going to paper and tell them what that first public...
Yes, next Monday night's the public meeting for the feasibility, for the aquatic feasibility study. Have we set it for... What time? We set it for six?
Six.
Six? Set the feasibility study for six o'clock. Uh... It's an open public meeting. Invite anybody nearby to be a part of that. Uh... There'll be a presentation on similar sized facilities, towns that put in similar facilities to what we're having in our minds, at least at this point, uh... And a talk of what types of facilities, what types of amenities are at those facilities. And then a general discussion. Anybody that has ideas or thoughts or whatever, we'll take those into account as we move forward. Uh... This is not to make any final decisions on the... On what we'll or won't be in it. Uh... This is to develop our conceptual plan to decide what will be basing our budget on.
Well, it's the first step of getting public input.
When you get... Yeah, we get to public input as to what they would or would not like to see.
Folks that might be for or against it, it's their opportunity to come and give your opinion.
Give it a...
Downtown update, what?
Downtown is, uh... In... Doing well. Uh... We caught some two or three weeks of really good weather, and they were able to make a lot of progress. The lights that are up are lit. If you've had a chance to get down there and see that, that's really nice. Really excited about that. Uh... The landscapers are moving forward with all their work. Within the next two weeks, most of the landscape work, most of the lighting, most of the concrete work should be done. Uh... We should be looking at paving crews coming in and...
Start hopefully next fourteen pages. It's my understanding.
Yeah, that's the hope.
That's the hope. That's next Monday.
Paving crews are notorious for moving late. Uh... But... So I...
So we're hoping by the end of this month it's be completely done?
Ballard's plan is about end of this month it's be completed.
One of these lights goes out. Does Alabama power change that? Or are we responsible for those? Or have lights been...
These are your lights. Uh... You purchased these lights. These are... These are yours.
Hopefully that lasts long. Okay. Yes, I appreciate it. Uh... Number eight is a recommendation to accept Kevin Walker's request to step down of the street department superintendent returning to equipment operators and change the street of page fifteen to fifteen. and change his rate of pay to fifteen to fifteen per hour. Cattan has asked us to step down and go back in the department. And we will be posting his job here in just a few minutes, but this is a recommendation to accept his, and the reason is we've had openings in his department to where he can put it down, it's not, not be creating a new slot by hiring somebody else, there's a slot open for him to go to. So that would be my recommendation to accept his recommendation. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Hon, favor say aye? By the way, Ken's done a fantastic job, this is his idea, he just feels more comfortable, they've been in the board. None of you reflect on him, he's done, he's done a great job. So the next will be a recommendation to advertise for a street department superintendent, and we voted several months ago to post these jobs. So we will be posting a street superintendent job, I do have a job description to go by, so when, uh, he, uh, one of the times to put an application in, we've got the, uh, description of what this job entails. So we'll run it for two weeks, that's right, you know, so. Hopefully by the first of May, you know, maybe by the next meeting, or we can be conducting some interviews, and by the first of May have, be ready to hire someone to take this position.
So if somebody calls in and says, oh, Lord, you've got an application on file, do you tell them, oh, come in and redo it and pick up a job description?
They can come get us your job description, there, we've got a lot of applications on file, we've probably got a folder of that thick, full of applications.
So to be considered, they have to come pick up a copy of the job description?
Exactly, so we'll know. And they can call City Hall, nine two one two one two one, for that. And it'll be in the papers, we'll put it in the paper. So the recommendation to advertise a street department superintendent.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Agreed, any other discussion? Hon, favor say aye? Also gonna be another opening, we have an employee that's gonna be leaving in that same department, this will be for just a street department employee. Will not be a superintendent, it'll just be a regular job in the street department, so I need a recommendation to advertise this job also.
You got a job description on it also? I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Tim, you say? Hon, favor say aye? Number eleven's recommendation to declare certain property located direct center that's no longer needed for Mr. Firstes. We're gonna take some property, some of those old lawn mowers, sell those, apply that towards the new one we just bought. In order to do that, we have declared, uh, no longer needed, so is there a motion to, to do that so we can sell that property? I think it's a few old lawn mowers that can't be used. Okay. Francis got a motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Hon, favor say aye? Number twelve's the recommendation to approve purchase of turnout gear for volunteer firefighters not to exceed ten thousand, which is in their general fund budget. When we did the budget last year, we did put money in the general, in their, each department's fund, and out of this fund is equipment that needs to be purchased or has to be purchased. Tim, Chief Rock, he would come explain that to us.
Yeah, we, we bought some last year and then we put in again, we need about fifteen sets is what we need, but we're trying to replace them a little bit at a time. And National Fire, I believe it was, they changed color or their turnout gear or something, well, this company that we've been getting our gear from, bought it, and we can get this stuff for half price. It's brand new, still in the bag, still sealed up, if they've got our sizes. And that's why I'm coming to you tonight to see, we can get a jump on it, see if we can get some of this, it'd be half price, but it's still brand new. They just changed colors and this company bought it for, bought it back from them, and they're selling it at half price. Hopefully we can get some, and get the sizes and, uh, get some of those replaced.
Okay, how many did you say the other day?
We need fifteen, but, but we put in a budget for five, which would be around ten thousand dollars, or about two thousand dollars a set. And we can get a set for a thousand dollars now, they, they cut it to half price, if they've got it in our sizes that we need. And they're still brand new.
And it's going to the volunteers?
Yes.
Because of the officers, you guys got some?
We got some last year, yes.
So you don't think?
No.
And it's going to the volunteers that work the most, I guess you'd say?
The ones that responded most.
Are those the ones they have, are they torn or worn?
Yeah, we've got, uh, and I went through them today, and, uh, we've got, and we've got some that needs coats, some that needs pants. When we get a new set, we pass it down, what's still good, and it, we got, we need, some of them need coats, and some of them need pants, and then some of them need a complete set, so it's...
So you buy them sets actually?
Yes.
It comes to set, uh, this, it's not...
You can buy a cover, you can buy pants, but a set, use a coat, pants, we try to buy at the same time, it's around two thousand dollars a piece.
So it's pretty much up and stalling?
Yes.
How old are these you got?
The ones we've got now are seven years old.
Is that about the lots?
Yeah, you can, so you can get, sometimes you can get ten years out of them, but, uh, we got, uh, we've got a, I think Barry got a grant ten years ago, about seven years ago, and we replaced everybody's in a department, and they're just wearing out now. You can get five to ten years, it just depends on how much they're used.
I'll make a motion that we do this, get all we can for there.
I'll say.
So Greg, I mean, Tim, if we get this, then we won't have to come back next year and ask for more of it?
Hopefully not.
And Francis made a motion, and Greg has made a second, to purchase this not to, not to exceed, you may not spend that much.
If not, hopefully.
Why is, uh, got a motion and a second, hon, favor say aye? Thank you very much. Tim, right there, while you're there, just, other night we had our, um, work session. You was telling us about one of the pumper trucks, number three twenty-seven, that, um, did not pass the pump test, it worked, but it needs some work.
Yeah, it had a primer.
Tell us about this right here.
The primer motor and pump went out on it when they were doing the test, and, uh, when it went out, it started failing the test, and then on it went whole suction, and, uh, we know it has to have a primer motor and a pump put on it, and I got an estimate on that, it was around nineteen hundred dollars. And then, uh, but we don't know if that's what's completely wrong with it, and they won't know till they get it to the shop and tie it into it, see what all is messed up in the pump on it. Worst case scenario, it'd be ninety-eight hundred, ten thousand dollars to fix it, but we're, they think, just talking to them on the phone, that it's the primer pump and motor, and, uh, they can fix it for around two grand.
So we're hoping it's not?
We're hoping it's not the impounder.
You take it to Decatur tomorrow?
That's correct.
So this is approximately how high it would be?
The high end would be ten thousand, yes.
And this is a truck, uh, the ninety-five model?
Yes.
That, uh, which latest with what else, pumper trucks?
You know, we got the O seven, and, uh, thank you very much.
When they fix it, does it have a warranty?
Yes, it will have a warranty on the car, on the parts.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Thank you, Greg. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any other discussion on preparing this truck? Hon, favor say aye? Tim, while you're there, I know you got a call today before we adjourn. We've been concerned by our ISO, we're trying to get prepared for our ISO, you got a call today, and they are gonna be here when, July first?
July first.
So that's when, between now and July, uh, we've already working on a plan to be ready for them, but then, tell us what that, tell us when that...
They'll come in and do a survey of the communications department, which is the nine-one-one, that makes up ten percent of it. Fire department makes up fifty percent of it, uh, water department's thirty or forty percent. They'll have to close hydrates, and they'll go around and check the stations and the buildings and make sure we got the right equipment.
How long does that take to do that?
They can do, well, we, we started on it today, right after I got off the phone with him, he sent me an email with stuff to get started on. So it'll take us about three, two months to get all of it together, and then when he comes in, he'll just have to sit down and look at, look at it all.
How long after he comes on July first will he let us know about our current hiring?
I think it's within thirty days.
Will know if it changes from a four to five or whatever?
Yes, sir.
So we have a plan in place to try to keep it where it's at?
That's correct, and, and they will give you, uh, I think, as long as you put a plan in place and you're working on it, they will allow you six months, maybe even a year, to get back to where you need to be.
So if we're working on the equipment, those trucks that are having problems, then if they say that we're making a conscientious effort, then they will go on?
Yeah, they'll, they'll work with you pretty good on it. Or they did back when they came in two thousand and two, I guess it was the last time they were there.
Is it signed out?
No, it's different one.
They would recommend a change in the rating, how, when would it be in the fact record?
I, I don't really know when it takes effect, uh, I'm hoping to be, you know, just within...
Yeah, they, they give us time to correct whatever, they see is wrong, and we have the time and the chance to do, to make the right steps, but get it correct. Okay. That's how we have tonight, the idea of announcements, so at this time, an entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Agreed, is there a second? Hey, Francis, hon, favor say aye? Thank you.